Okay, welcome to this session on productivity that's been organised and run by the Productivity Institute. I'm Tony Venables, Research Director of the Productivity Institute. I'll be chairing this. And we have five speakers, all of them key speakers in the Productivity Institute. Let me briefly introduce them in the order in which they're going to be speaking. First, Bart Banark, who's director, managing director of the institute, based in the University of Manchester. Then Professor Mary Maroni from King's in London. Professor Stephen Roper, Warwick, Rebecca Riley, Professor Ross, of course, at King's, and then I'll come in again at the end. They're all key players in the Productivity Institute. What I want to achieve with this afternoon session is really two things. First, to sort of inform people something about the Productivity Institute. It's a relatively new institute established by the E S R C. But spreading the word about the Productivity Institute is important. And second, and more important for this afternoon session, is actually to start a discussion amongst the panelists and with the audience about productivity and the UK productivity puzzle, so-called, and some of the challenges that are placed in the UK. So I've asked each of the speakers to say a little about their research programmes, their research activities in the institute, and then to say rather more about their current research on productivity and put some ideas out on the table in front of us, in front of us all to discuss. Okay, so with that brief introduction, let me go straight to Bart, Bart Banark. I've asked him to say rather more about the structure of the institute as well as his own research. So I'm going to give him a bit longer than the others. One other thing I should say by way of introduction. I will endeavour to manage both timing and some questions. I anticipate this will be extremely challenging, but if you bear with me, we'll see if we can get maybe a question or two after each of the speakers and hopefully some time for Q and A at the end. Bart, over to you.
Right, thanks, Tony, and thanks for my colleagues joining here and for you attending this session. And I think I've been tasked with sort of two things, that I got three minutes more. One is to talk a little bit about the Productivity Institute, say a few more things about it for those of you not so familiar with it. It's a somewhat different kind of research organisation than other research organisations we're familiar with. But then I also spent a little bit of time on talking about some work that I'm doing myself, the macro and sort of the macro diagnosis of productivity, where we are on that and the sort of latest issues and latest insights that we got in from that. So you should be able to see my screen. If that's not, I'm sure that Tony will shout that's not the case. This slide here is a very short summary of what the Productivity Institute is about. And you can already see some differences with other E S R C-funded institutes. It's relatively large. It's a big investment of £32 million over a period of five years. It's a relatively long period. It involves a fairly large group of collaborators, there are eight Russell Group universities participating, as well as the National Institute of Economic and Social Research and ESCO, the Economic Statistics Centre of Excellence. We have a large number of individuals involved in the research, probably up to about 80 of them. There are 40 co-investigators and another 40. And then, very importantly, there is a very large engagement programme around this. And this is really engagement with the policy community, but also with the business community. And I'll come back to that in a minute when I talk about our regional productivity forums. I'll talk a little bit about the themes there in the middle as well. Now, every institute has a mission, so we have one as well. I'm not going to read it out to you. But I just sort of highlighted a few words that are important. It's broad-based productivity. It's about sustainable and inclusive productivity growth. I mentioned the engagement and involvement of policy and business makers, and that's of policymakers and business executives. This is not just about us bringing research to them, but also them giving us better ideas about what are the relevant research topics that we need to research. There will be some emphasis, although, you know, productivity is a topic that economists are very engaged on. There are other disciplines that are contributing to this, quite importantly. I should mention, for example, quite a few of our co-eyes are economists in business schools, work intensively with management and innovation researchers. There is a big group of political scientists involved in this work as well. So there's room for interdisciplinary work, as well as, as I mentioned, the broader link with issues like living standards and wellbeing, and of course also the regional specificities. One thing I should mention there at the top, at the bottom left, is the need for developing a productivity narrative. When you engage with the business community, or perhaps even with the policy community, the first question is what is productivity? And we economists sort of have a definition that we can work with, but it's not the definition that resonates very well outside the academic world. So a lot of the work that we're doing in our engagement work is to try to get these narratives clearer and to link these narratives up with the thinking around that in the academic world. I mentioned the importance of the regional element, and Tony will speak about the regional issues a bit more. But we have, as part of this, established eight regional productivity fora across the nation, five of them in England, and then each, one of each in the three devolved nations. And each of those, each of those forensics are basically business executives and local policy or regional policymakers are supported by one of the universities in the institute, providing and really making the content relevant and feed to questions into the research programme. The institute also has a productivity commission, which is basically a group of experts linked to the institute in one way or another, that really tries to identify what are the key policy topics that come out of this. Policy domains are very, very broad when it comes to productivity. It's not just the treasury and base, but includes many other departments of government, as well as a huge amount of regional and local government entities that are important here. The Productivity Commission has done a couple of sort of scope-setting sessions in the past year and is now about to publish their first report before the summer. These are sort of key policy domains that they will have further evidence sessions on, and hopefully you'll see more of that coming along. I'll spend a few more words on our research programme, because you'll see some of that coming back in the presentations that Steve and Mary, Rebecca and Tony are going to give in a minute. Currently, we're thinking in the programme about eight themes, and you can sort of organise them in a couple of buckets. So the first three themes, human capital, knowledge capital, organisational capital, is basically about investment in the intangible part of the economy. I'll come back to that in a minute, because that's actually part of the research that I'd like to present to you in a second. But it's that intangible component of investment that is driving a lot of the research that the institute is currently doing. Now, the importance of geography and place, and Tony will again, as I mentioned earlier, come back to this. The large regional differences, which frankly we see everywhere, but also the peculiarities around the regional differences in the UK. For example, the underperformance of second-tier cities in the UK is something that has very specific attention. I also mentioned the importance of policy and institutions and governance. That's why we really need political scientists in this field. So this is not just about the current policy portfolio, but very much also about what is the institutional and governance framework about where policy is being made. So if you think about the levelling of white paper that recently appeared, we had three contributions ahead of the publication of that paper that were dealing with issues like how is undershore policy? What is the institutional setting around undershore policymaking? What is the institutional setting around devolved government? You know, where does the devolved government come in when it comes to productivity? And there was also a paper around fiscal decentralisation and what that was meaning in light of the levelling up. Now, measurement and methods, we partner directly with ESCO, which Rebecca is leading us as well, and leading our measurement and methods theme, and she will speak about a couple of topics related to that theme. And then last but not least are the bigger underlying issues of it's obviously the transition to net zero, but also the digital transformation process, and perhaps the combination of those two are quite important. Now, before I now zoom in a little bit more, the few minutes that I've left, on some of the research that I would like to present, I'd just like to again go back to this issue of what productivity is and why it matters. So, you know, again, as economists, we think in terms of economic productivity at some measure of output, usually that's GDP. Also, there's more discussion now about sort of more extended concepts of GDP and some measure of input, which usually is, you know, capital and labour. And, you know, if we want, we include intangible capital as well. But frankly, when you begin to think about sort of the more broader impacts of productivity on the, on society, you could define the term around society productivity. It's basically how in a particular regional setting, we are actually using our resources more broadly to achieve a certain outcome. That can be GDP, but it can also be improved living standards or health and wellbeing and things like that. And so you can see on the right-hand side, a chart coming from one of the ESCO discussion papers produced two, three years ago, where you can see that if you extend the concept of GDP to broader concepts of outcomes, you can begin to take on board issues like distributional effects, welfare effects and sustainability effects. And again, that's a part of the research that I think is very important for us. So it shows the broad-based nature of what we're doing. Okay, now I'm going to use my last few minutes to talk a little bit about sort of what are most important macro insights here. This is a slide which sort of represents the common wisdom, if you like. So we know that the productivity has slowed down in most advanced nations. You see that in this chart, it's just the level of GDP per hour worked. But you can see that the UK has been lower than some comparator countries here. You see Germany and the US and the Netherlands, but you could put other countries. UK is always at the lower end. And it also suggests that the UK has slowed more compared to its growth performance in the pre-financial crisis period. In fact, the UK probably showed even somewhat faster productivity growth than most other countries pre-the financial crisis, but it's slowed more since. And the common wisdom is that this is partly the result of systemic under-investment in key components of tangible and intangible capital, that we've had a proportionally large number of low-skill and low-productivity jobs in the UK, that we have a relatively long tail of low-productive firms across nations, across industries, and that we have many areas where there's a sort of persistent low-skill, low-wage, low-productivity equilibrium. And that includes the second-tier cities and many rural places. So that's the common wisdom, and a lot of what our research currently is showing is largely confirming some of these issues and driving it further down. But I'd like to spend a little bit more time on sort of what the latest numbers are showing on this diagnosis and that we perhaps need to, we think a little bit more about what sort of the macro numbers are actually showing us at the moment. So these are some of the very latest numbers that are being produced by the Conference Board, one of the producers of these global productivity numbers. And what you can see from this chart is the growth performance in the period 2000 to 2007. So that's the blue bars here, the pre-financial crisis period, and then the growth performance post-financial crisis. So I started there in 2011, so we're dropping the financial crisis itself from this comparison. Look at 2011 to 2019. So what you see, slowdown everywhere, but the slowdown has been relatively large in the case of the UK compared to other countries, although it's also been quite large in the case of the United States. We also see that's a very common theme around the slowdown in capital intensity. And this is tangible capital intensity, so it's just machinery and equipment and including ICT capital and things like that. And again, you see a relatively large slowdown in capital intensity in the UK, but coming from pretty high growth performance in the pre-crisis period. So perhaps not completely out of whack compared to what you're seeing in other countries. TFP slowdown also is very widespread, although not that visible in the case of Germany, although it's slow there as well. I mean, 0.4% isn't a lot, TFP growth anyway. But in most other nations, we have seen the slowdown, and in some cases, like France and the EU 14, which is basically all the most advanced EU countries except the UK now, and the US, we have seen that slowdown as well. So you see some confirmation here, but one thing that you do see is that this slowdown in capital deepening, intangible capital deepening, perhaps is not extraordinary compared to other countries, particularly given the fact that it has come from a pretty high contribution that it was making pre-financial crisis. We also have the benefit now of a new dataset of intangible capital being produced by Lewis and Rome at the European Commission funding. So this is the very latest numbers that are available from Lewis, giving you actual numbers for some countries up to 2019, but here I left it until 2018. And that allows us to not only look at tangible capital, but also look at intangible capital. Now, the numbers are slightly different. If you add intangible capital, your output concept and your labour productivity concept is changing a little. Also, in the case of the UK, these numbers are vintage before the revisions that were made by O N S, so that makes a bit of difference as well. But again, you can see here the labour productivity growth rates, output per hour, slowdown everywhere. But then when you look at the contributions, we basically broke it up into labour quality contributions, as it basically changes in skill levels. And then the reddish parts of the bar is the sort of tangible capital contributions. IT capital is the dark red, and non-IT capital is the light red. And then you've got the intangible part, which is the dark yellow is basically what the national accounts are measuring in terms of intangible. So this is R and D and software primarily. And then the light yellow is the non-national accounting tangibles, things that are not yet included in national accounts, but that we can measure. And that includes other types of economic competencies, for example, like management competencies, organisational competencies, and so on and so forth. So again, you see slowdowns everywhere, but you see in the UK that the slowdown in intangible capital has been relatively large, particularly in relation to the total factor productivity growth rate. So you see that amount of intangible capital contribution we still have relative to the TFP growth rate is relatively limited. There's a lot more to say about this chart, and if people have questions during the discussion, I'm happy to come back to that. I just want to end with a few observations on the basis of those charts, because I do think that in the, we have a tendency sometimes to think that all the problems that we're looking at are UK problems, and we need to have a UK-based solution to it. And I think a lot of the research, including those charts, has shown that a lot of these problems are actually global causes, or at least causes related to the most advanced economies, to make it a little bit more narrow than that. But there are some UK-specific issues as well. So for example, the labour productivity slowdown is quite widespread, but in the case of the UK, it's, that slowdown is relatively large, but it is so large because it comes from a pretty good growth rate pre-financial crisis. The slowdown in capital deepening is ubiquitous, you see it everywhere, but the slowdown in capital deepening in the UK perhaps wasn't out of the extraordinary if you compare it with other countries. The slowdown in intangible capital deepening was less in most countries than the slowdown in tangible capital deepening. But in the case of the UK, that slowdown in intangible capital deepening was relatively large. So that is, that is something that really points at the sort of specific UK issue that we see this relatively large slowdown in intangible capital deepening, particular in relation to total factor productivity growth. Pre-financial crisis, TFP growth was the dominant source of growth, that's true everywhere. But in the UK, we see that this, there is a correlation, that seems to be a correlation, between total factor productivity growth weakening and intangibles growth weakening. And that, of course, is partly related to the nature of our economy. Our economy is relatively strongly intangible driven because of the relatively large share of the services sector in the economy. So slowdowns in intangibles and slowdowns in TFP tend to go together quite substantially. Now, overall, the last bullet point here, the productivity slowdown globally was really a combination of weaker investment, weaker capital deepening, if you like, and slower TFP growth. But globally, we see that the relative importance of tangible capital has actually increased. Whereas in the UK, the total factor productivity slowdown is more predominant, more stronger related to weaker intangible capital deepening. So Tony, let me stop there. I'm not sure if I used up my minutes. Happy to go a little bit more deeper into all of these data, but we could later point to during the discussion if you'd like.
Thank you, Bart. Very prompt. And thank you for emphasising the role of intangibles and slowdown there, the important issue. I think we'll be coming back to in the next hour, the length of the hour, and certainly in the year in the research programme. Let me remind the audience that to submit questions, which I think I'll be able to see. Whether there are questions, I'll try and take some after each session, but if after each presentation, if they don't get asked, we'll have time at the end, I'm sure, to pose them. So do put questions up through the system, please. Okay, let me now move on to Mary. Perfect, great, okay.
Okay. Okay, so thank you for inviting me to speak on this topic. So I'm talking about human capital skills and in particular the regional skill dimension. I've been working on productivity for almost 40 years, as long as Bart has. We kind of started together. And in every aspect of work we've done with international comparisons, the EU Clem's work and various other work we've done, skills have always been an important dimension. And so it doesn't come as a surprise in this particular project that we also have a theme that's specifically devoted to human capital. And particularly, skills are important when you have rapid technological progress like we have at the moment and the digital economy and all that. So this theme has a number of projects. And I'm not going to talk about the, I'm not going to list the projects or talk specifically about other projects, but they do employ a range of methods from the kind of quantitative analysis that we are doing to using case studies and firm-level interviews. And so we hope that at the end of this, we'll have a clear idea of what skills are important for the digital economy and some idea of what the policy implications of what we find. Okay, so I want to talk here about just one project. And this is joined with the measurement and methods theme, because it's, a lot of it is concerned with the measurement of skills, which we call the demand and supply of skills in the UK, the regional analysis. And we're looking here at evidence from new data sources. So the demand side, we're measuring using data from job vacancy platforms. There's an enormous amount of work going on at the moment on using these job vacancy platforms, so we're kind of adding to that. And then the supply side, we're using a range of sources, including the LFS, the UK Household Longitudinal Survey, which most of us are used to calling Understanding Society, but it's changed its name, and the Leo database. So let me start with the demand side, and this is work mostly by my PhD student, Elodie Andrew, and Mal Gazzata, who was a PhD student at Cambridge. So they've been working with the Burning Glass data. Now, I guess there's so many papers use a Burning Glass database, and it's a very rich database that gives a huge amount of information, not just about demand for skills, but lots of other aspects of intangible capital as well in terms of, you know, the type of skills. But it does have some drawbacks. And one of the problems with the Burning Glass data is it doesn't have a lot of information, educational qualifications in the, in the kind of data. If you purchase data from Burning Glass, you get these variables, but the education qualification that is developed by Burning Glass itself is not very rich and not, as we found, not very accurate. So what Elodie and Mal Gazzata have done is they've gone back to the text, the Burning Glass text, the actual text of the advertisement, and reestimated the educational qualifications. Now, not every ad has educational qualifications, but in the Burning Glass data that they, if you can purchase, only about 20% of ads have educational qualifications. When Elodie and Mal Gazzata went back to the data and did their own text analysis, they caught this up to about 45%. So it's, it was a well-worked while exercise. And then they also use machine learning techniques to identify tech jobs, they call tech jobs. And I can't even begin to go through the complexities of that in this very short presentation, but they're using various text analysis, again, linked to some extra work done by external people. Okay, so what they've done is they've put together this very large dataset, and the kind of questions we want to ask from this dataset are really have there been any changes over time? And in particular, across the UK, because we're very concerned about the regional analysis in this work, in the prevalence of tech skills and the educational requirements of jobs. So we want to look at have jobs become more complex. And particularly, one issue that we really would like to get a handle on is if, there's a lot of literature out there that says that graduates are now working in non-graduate jobs, non-graduate occupations, but is the work they're doing actually different? Are the skills that are required by the graduates and non-graduate jobs different from non-graduates and non-graduate jobs? So that's the kind of questions we want to ask. However, I'd like to just talk about one application of this data that Elodie has put forward, which is to look at the use of skill, techie skills and education as a dimension for which firms can address labour cost shocks. And she uses a particular nice policy change, change in the minimum wage in 2016, where the minimum rate rose by about 7.5%, and this was an unexpected increase in the minimum wage. And then she examines how firms reacted in terms of raising their productivity. So if you look at a lot of the literature on the minimum wage, there's a huge focus on the impact on employment. But there are, you know, there are other aspects as well. There is some work on the direct productivity impacts of the minimum wage. But here they're looking at is how could firms have raised their productivity following the rise in the minimum wage by changing the education or the skilled demands of their workforce? Demands for new workers. So she, what she does done is she applies a very standard difference and difference strategy. And so before and after the policy, but uses a measure of exposure to the minimum wage at the local labour market level in 2014, before the, before the policy. And so she does a very detailed analysis of this exposure to the minimum wage. And if I had a lot of time, I could show you some nice charts of the country where there's different exposure. So she's using the share of ads paying below the minimum wage in 2014 and cross-classifying that into two digit occupation and travel-to-work areas. So very local labour market analysis here. About 15% of ads paid below the minimum wage in 2014. So it is, it's quite a large proportion, and therefore you can get a lot of variation in the exposure to the minimum wage. And then what, she's looking at the impact on substitution across different types of labour, measuring, using both the education qualifications measure that they developed and these tech skills measure. And then what they show is that there is a reduction of the share of non-graduate level demand for workers with non-graduate level qualifications and an increase in demand for ICT skills following the national, the increase in national minimum wage. So this is some evidence that there's an impact on the minimum wage on employers, that they shift towards their more productive wages in order to compensate for the increase in labour costs. So this is a nice kind of application of this data. However, this, this analysis, because it's talking about the minimum wage as confines, the lower end of the skill distribution, and we have to think about how we're going to look more at the higher end of that distribution as we use, you know, as we work with the data and use it in our analysis of regional labour markets. So this, this work is at the national level, it's not at the regional. Okay, the next, just a little bit on the supply side. This is work we're looking at, I've been doing with Augustine de Koolen at King's and Larissa Marioni at Nisa. And we've been looking at the question of regional mobility. So if we look at trying to match demand and supply, as well, if there's an increase in demand for, say, high-tech skills in one part of the country, one way of matching that demand is to have people move to the place where the demand is highest. So regional mobility is a very important part of local labour markets, and we've been looking at to try and do some work on this. And what we've done so far has been building on some ESCO work on measuring regional human capital stock, but using the lifetime income approach, although we will be going beyond that particular framework when we look at trying to put demand and supply together. And so what we did is we calculated one-year transition probabilities to and from regions by gender, age and qualification group. And again, I haven't time to really put any slides up here, but we find that these net transition probabilities to and from reasons are quite high. So often, in the one-year probabilities can be of the order of 9, 10, 11% from two regions and from regions. And, but when you look at these, they're high, but they're, they're high mostly or almost all the time for the young and the highly skilled. So older people don't move very much, and the low-skilled don't move very much. And when we've used these, there's these transition probabilities then to look at how much impact that has on the regional human capital stocks as measured by the O N S. And we've done some simulations on this. And we've done some simulations on this and that suggests that taking account of regional mobility significantly increases the disparity across the regions. So if you don't take account of the mobility, you get a picture of human capital stock per per person in regions that are closer together than if you do actually take account of mobility. Right. So and then just with one minute left. So just to talk about where we're going on this work. So we'll examine further demands for, as I said earlier, we want to look particularly if graduates and nongraduate jobs are or if the skills they're requiring are different from the people who've taken traditionally taken those jobs. And on the supply side, we want to refine our mobility estimates because we do want to we think this is a very important aspect. And unfortunately, the UK HLS is the sample sizes are really too small to do very much with this. So we're looking to look at using Leo. It's a longitudinal education outcomes data that only applies to people up to the age, I think now of about 30. But we can see from the raw data that the mobility is really concentrated in that age group. And then we want to bring together the demand and supply side of the regional level using data on matching the demand supply through the educational qualifications and the occupations and to consider this whole question of skill mismatch and the and the extent to which these increased demands can be met by regional ability. And we would really like to look at international mobility as well if we can bring the data in on that. And then finally, just the last thing we would like to do here, a very more ambitious aim is to link to supply skill produced by the education system. So what we'd like to do is to is to see to what extent the local educational systems are providing the skills that are required by the by firms. So if there's an increase in demand by firms for high tech skills, do they have to rely on mobility from other regions or is is the local labour market, the local education system actually producing the skills they want? And young people going to higher education colleges are very mobile, so that's not such an issue. But so we'd like to focus here on the the further education colleges where the graduates are tend to be less mobile. And this will this will link into some work that the Productivity Institute is doing, doing quite a lot of work on on FE colleges. We would like to be able to maybe do use some web scraping of the 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 modules and the the programs available in FE colleges as well. But we're going to, we're starting with a pilot with that. But but this is a, this is a an important part of the whole story, I think, that you you know, you need to link to the what what's what kind of education the people in the local areas are getting as well as as well as, you know, more aggregate data on what proportion of people in the area have various qualifications. Okay, I'll leave it at that. I think my time is up. Yes. Not sure if I went over or not.
Thank you, Mary. That's that's great. Yeah, that was a nice overview of parts of what is a large package of work going on on various sort of labour market issues on both the supply and the demand side. And I'd like to emphasize the the regional productivity forums that Bart mentioned at the beginning, being quite important in generating ideas and questions for us and issues on on the local level on both the supply and demand for skills. I think you do have to see it very much at the local level. So there's a lot of work going on there. Let me once again invite people to submit questions and comments if they have any. And hand over to Steve Roper from Warwick, who will be talking about firms and organizational capital and that strand of work in the institute. Steve.
Thanks, Tony. Good afternoon, everyone. It's my job to try to introduce what in TPI terms is called organizational capital, which is really the firm level aspect to productivity and 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 wealth creation. I guess that within this organizational capital theme, we've sort of structured a range of projects around four main areas which relate to the ways in which a particular locality or a region can actually boost productivity, wealth creation within that sort of area. And so we have some projects around entrepreneurship and its contribution to productivity growth. And this shades over into some of what Mary was talking about around the labour market, but also brings in issues around diversity and migrant communities, for example, potentially. We have some projects, and I'll talk about these a little bit more in a moment, around innovation and net zero, particularly as Bart mentioned, the importance of that transition in existing firms. So that's very much the contribution of innovation exporting to productivity upgrading in existing firms. There's a series of projects around foreign direct investment, bringing new productive capital into into localities, which Nigel Drifield is leading. And then we also have some projects on supply chain upgrading, which Jean Godsell and colleagues are involved in. The organizational capital theme is being led by Nigel Drifield overall from Warwick. And there's an important link between much of the work that we're doing here and the Midlands Regional Productivity Forum, where that that link to the productivity forum is also informing much of the work that's going on in the organizational capital theme and pushing us in some other directions that we hadn't anticipated. But we can maybe come back to that a bit later on. And I wanted to focus on one particular piece of work that we did last year as part of the TPI program, which was really looking at trying to derive some early results about the impact of government support for firms, particularly for SMEs really, during the COVID-19 crisis, or the worst of it, perhaps, the worst couple of years, and and how that actually might influence productivity in the future. So this is a piece of work that's jointly conducted between me, one of our research fellows, Halima Jabril, and Mark Hart at Aston. I'll give you the reference a bit later on for this in a bit more detail. But what we did here was we used data to consider the, and a bit of econometrics, to consider the impact of three UK government support measures, the three main ones during the productivity during the COVID crisis. A couple of loan schemes and the furlough scheme. And we asked two questions. Of course, we don't have data, we didn't have real time data on firm productivity. What we do have is some survey data, which gives us some insight into how firms are planning to invest in the future around various types of investment. I think five or six different types of investment, including capital innovation skills. And then also some data on employee wellbeing, which we were just happening to collect at the time of the survey of the time of this project. And so we can also test the impact of these government support measures on on employee wellbeing. Simple equip, simple structure. Oh, I've lost a slide. Oh, there we are. Sorry. We so for the investment analysis, we're using data from the SME finance monitor. For the wellbeing analysis, we were using some data from our own ERC, Mental Health and Wellbeing Survey for last year, which again gives us an overview of mental health and wellbeing among the workforce of around 1,500 firms across the Midlands and some idea about firms' use of these government support measures and a bunch of controls. Very simple two equation structure instrumenting the treatment, either the measures in isolation, so furlough on its own, grants, sorry, loans on their own, all the combination thereof as the treatment. And and a series of firm level controls to see how actually these 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 different measures or combinations of measures were influencing firms' future plans. As Mary said, the excuse for not going into more detail here is Tony's time constriction. So we'll just move on to some of the key results here. I know, Tony, it's a bit rough. And so what did we find? So we had about 4,000 SMEs go analysis, data on about 4,000 SMEs going into the investment analysis and around 1,500 going into the employee wellbeing analysis. What we found generally across the piece was quite positive average marginal effects. So firms that were getting furloughed, the loan schemes or all the combination generally had higher intentions to invest in future investment across a range of these different different areas. And also to had lower experience of some aspects of bad employee wellbeing or mental health. So mental health absence, sickness absence and repeat sickness absence was all lower among firms that were using furlough and a combination of furlough and the and the CBI schemes. We weren't able to estimate the impact of the loan schemes on their own on employee wellbeing because the sample sizes were too small. So NA in this in in this table. So in the in this analysis, what we found was pretty widespread positive effects of the impact of government support on both of these areas, on investment planning and and on employee wellbeing. And these effects were fairly large. Firms which received a combination of furlough and and loans were 17.2 percentage points more likely to plan investments and capital investment. And that that though you saw the size of some of those effects in in the previous chart, and around 9% less likely to report some of the mental health absence. So I guess it's a bit early to draw conclusions about productivity benefits here or TFP more generally. But I guess that if we would think that, you know, these these contributions to more positive investment intentions and wellbeing are likely to have most contribute to sustaining productivity in the in the longer term. The reference for the papers there, I guess the downside of this analysis is it was relatively short term. The and also it excludes, it's very much around the impact of these measures on the individual firms and doesn't really take into account any of the kind of structural impacts that we might anticipate in terms of, you know, sustaining the life of zombie firms or or anything else. I think just to finish, there's work going on 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 the organizational capital theme on all of the four areas I discussed, supply chain, foreign direct investment, the innovation stuff and the entrepreneurship area. In terms of the upgrading innovation and productivity within existing firms, we're very much concerned at the moment around the relationships between innovation, exporting and productivity. And in particular, the way in which different types of innovation influence the probability that firms are able to export and increase their productivity. And that links quite a number of the different areas of TPI together. And what we're finding there is a really quite significant difference between the impact of new to the market innovation and new to the firm innovation and the productivity and exporting implications of that. And in a sense, that kind of leads you down a particular, to have a particular focus on innovation novelty potentially as the key to kind of both export market orientation and 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 productivity. More on that as we go forward. But I think, Tony, that is probably all I want to say for the moment.
Great. Thank you, Steve. Let me just add here, as Bart said at the beginning, there are eight distinct themes. We're not covering all of them. No way are we trying to be comprehensive in this short, short session. But having said that, yeah, let me add, there's a large stream of work going underway on adoption of digital technology. Or not, to what extent is the UK lagging or slow on this? What are the perceived obstacles? Where again, it's going to be a combination of the academic and pure 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 research, but also engagement with the regional productivity forums. We bring regional detail in on that. So that's possibly something we can return to but thank you, Steve. That's great. Rebecca.
Okay, so in my 10, 15 minutes, I will also talk a bit about what we're doing in the Productivity Institute, specifically around measurement and productivity measurement. And I'll highlight a few recent studies and also some forthcoming studies. And I'll start with stating the obvious. Well, it should be obvious that measurement matters for understanding productivity. And the reason for for stating this is because I still have this sense that one has to argue this case on a regular basis and that the measurement agenda isn't, you know, as widely acknowledged in mainstream economics. So hence hence that phrase. In any case, obviously, productivity is all about measuring outputs correctly, measuring the associated inputs correctly, and the conversion factor between these two things, be able to understand that. Apologies for the noise in the background. So, you know, measurement is obviously crucial on a number of levels of levels to that. And I mean, Mary, for example, highlighted in some detailed understanding of some of the inputs around human capital. But there's also some other very big issues in measuring productivity, which probably have come to the fore since the since the productivity slowdown after the great financial crisis in the UK, but also the slowdown in productivity that Bart highlighted as well more broadly in advanced economies. So I'm going to talk about some of those issues here. I've listed them. There's four of them that I wanted to highlight. Drawing on a forthcoming paper, which I've referred to down at the bottom of the slide. And it forms the basis of our thinking in this theme and also for our work going forward. So I mean, the first, the first point is around measuring volumes and 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 values. And I mean, I think there was a paper in the Journal of Political Economy by Felstine in 2017. And that paper reviewed very extensively the difficulties in actually distinguishing between what is a value and what is a volume. And of course, the key there is measuring prices. And his conclusion was that there were substantial errors of unknown size that remain in our ability to measure both real output and inflation. And I think his conclusion was that inflation is probably overestimated and growth underestimated. But there's, you know, so this is an ongoing agenda and and there's disagreement about how much this matters for actually understanding recent productivity developments. So some would say these difficulties in distinguishing between volumes and values actually contribute to the observed productivity slowdown that we see. Others would say, well, no, that's not the case. We've always had these issues and there's no reason why that should contribute to to recent developments. So there's, you know, there's a mixed, a mixed set of views there and also a mix of frameworks for trying to disentangle these things. The the ONS recently produced experimental estimates of double deflation. And I think, you know, in that exercise, we're able to take into account a different measure of price of prices of telecom. So this is an area where there's been huge technological development. Prices may have been overestimated or inflation may have been overestimated. They've implemented that in their double deflated experimental estimates. And indeed, that does show that or on those estimates, the productivity puzzle in the UK at least is is slightly slightly weaker than previously thought. On the location of production, there's some big issues here as well. The one of the studies that you may be familiar with is done in the US by Guvenin and co-authors. They analyzed issues around firms' profit shifting. So a lot of production takes place in multinational companies. And they have an ability to shift, for example, intangibles around. And and this can, of course, result in a disjuncture between where things are produced, where they're recorded. And of course, that's also very relevant for productivity measurement. Colleagues Giordano Mion and Manuel Tong have recently done an exercise looking at this for the UK. But, you know, the 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 big example here is that the it's the case of Ireland, which, you know, it had GDP growth of 26% or something like that in 2015. And this was because of these types of issues with firms moving things around to different locations and values and inputs being recorded in different places. So big, big issues there as well. Boundary issue. So what do we include within the production boundary is again an issue for productivity measurement. And, you know, household production is the is the traditional example there. And there's a household satellite account. I don't know if you if you had the chance to see a special session yesterday, which was organized by Josh Martin and Cleona Taylor, where they did discuss the spectrum that Bart put up at the beginning of this session. Spectrum of GDP, where we sort of move from market sector GVA to GDP to sort of more extended measures that take into account things that currently are outside the production boundary and move into a welfare space. And, you know, they they've And, you know, they they've with existing data have tried to populate some of those things. And certainly for growth in the last decade, it would appear that household production seems to be very important, but we don't know what that actually means for productivity because we need to have the input side there as well. Now, and again, this is also a key issue when we think about the digital economy. So there's been a lot of work around the value of of digit free digital goods. They are, they are not priced, therefore they're not included within within GDP, but we we get value from them. So this is concern that there's this increased disjuncture between the welfare that we get from a given level of GDP. And Bryn Jafn's work with with colleagues suggests that this could have significant effects on TFP in the United States of the order of magnitude of point zero five to point one one for one single free digital good Facebook. So you know, these are really quite significant issues if we want to try and understand productivity. I'll skip over missing capitals. There was a very nice lunchtime session on Monday where Partita Gupta and Diane Coyle discussed things that nature as a missing capital. But we can think of intangibles as as something that we typically don't consider sufficiently. So if I could just move forward. So with those things in mind, when we think about productivity here in the UK, but also elsewhere, you know, we can think about well, we have this productivity as this, you know, we need to understand output, input, the conversion rate. What is it that's happened to the production function? We're not measuring it or analyzing it as well as maybe we could because things have changed over time. Production is increasingly global, digital knowledge based, et cetera. So we need to move beyond the standard growth accounting analyses to understand productivity. And that sort of forms the basis for what we do here with the Productivity Institute. I've highlighted here a few things that we're considering, which, you know, around new methodologies or data for understanding productivity and production structures. So one of these is around the understanding, measuring the value of of free digital goods. And this builds on work by Bryn Jafn that I just highlighted before. I'll just go to the slide. This is not rent for you to absorb. I'm just trying to advertise a forthcoming paper that will come out in the Productivity Institute discussion paper series and also probably the ESCO discussion paper series has been carried out by John Lawrence Pocky, who's a PhD student here at King's College London and who will be taking this agenda forward with Kevin Fox in 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 University of New South Wales. What what this table is meant to highlight is this this highlights, he's tried to make things comparable in this in this table. But the key point here is there's been several attempts to try and value these free digital goods. And with different methods, for example, experiments where we where people are asked to forego a particular free digital good for a period of time. And what would they be willing to to give up for that in terms of money terms? Some of these experiments are incentive compatible, so they really, there are financial incentives to to provide the correct values, et cetera. Others have looked at, have tried to list this information from surveys like the work by David Nagoyan and Diane Coyle recently. And John Lawrence has been using a different methodology altogether and comes up with estimates that are at the lower end of what we see in this table. The point, the point here is just to say, do read the paper when it comes out, but there are very, very significant differences in valuations that have been collected through these different methodologies. So that what we're trying to do in with the Productivity Institute is to try and understand why we get these differences. Can we find a methodology that we could actually implement and that would provide a stable set of of figures? So that was around measuring digital economy. The we're we're doing some work on intangibles as well. And this is partially exploring different production function frameworks with microdata, but also you know, this sort of acknowledging the the framework put forward by Jonathan Haskell, that, you know, intangibles have different properties to other capital inputs. They're sunk, scalable, they have synergies and spillovers. Trying to explore how we might model those things and better understand how intangibles create value, create productivity. And that involves case studies as well. Finally, I just wanted to highlight one other thing that we're doing, which is around large scale firm level data sets. So you'll be aware of the fantastic work done by the OECD using comparable microdata sets across different countries to illustrate some of the stylized facts about firm level productivity, its distribution, business dynamism, et cetera. And they have, you know, looked at that for a lot of countries. The UK typically isn't included in these studies because the that we have some disparities in our firm level data sets. And, you know, they're probably not as fully fully utilized as they could be. So again, that's an area where we want to 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 build the infrastructure basically and try and look at some of these issues for the UK as well. And I'll just advertise another paper. This is a paper that was published in twenty twenty in the ESCO discussion paper series by colleagues at the ONS. They are building a longitudinal business database. This is under construction or continual development. But they have tried to develop the spine underlying the business, business surveys and brought in new data sets to this exercise and have been able to look at job creation, job destruction in the UK and find a slowdown in both gross job creation and destruction before and after the great financial crisis, as has also been found in some other countries. So just to say that that's also an area of investigation and by all means, have a look at this paper. And I'll stop there.
Great, thank you, Rebecca. Obviously, the measurement and methods theme, having having a strong measurement and methods theme is really important and underpins so much of what's going on in the institute. And it's great to see these sort of rather, you know, I mean, really nice, really fascinating questions about, you know, what happens to the production function being addressed at all at all levels. So thank you, Rebecca. You're chairing the next.
I I don't understand how, so sorry. I not sure how to unshare my screen for you.
Yeah, you are excused to go and sort out preparing for the next session, but please unshare your screen.
Thank you. Okay, I don't, I
Rebecca, I did it from my end just to.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you.
Yeah. So thank you, Rebecca. We understand you have to run off for that next session. Okay, I won't try and introduce myself, but I will ask whether I am successfully sharing that screen.
Yes, fine, Tony.
Thank you very much. Good. Okay. Yeah. So let me talk about some of the work going on under the geography in place theme of of the institute. Now, you've already, I mean, yeah, I think it's pretty self evident that regional disparities are inherent and probably quantitatively rather large part of the UK productivity problem. And obviously, it's it's an issue that crops up across so many of the things we're doing. We've already seen our skills, firm location decisions, governance, all being areas where the regional dimensions are really important. So regions are coming up across the board. And we have a particular specific theme on geography in place. Obviously, that theme is asking some of the big questions, you know, the measurement ones. To what extent is the productivity problem a regional problem? Which isn't quite as clear cut as people think. I mean, it's it's, you know, regional problem is really important. But the claims that, you know, regional disparities in Britain are greater than anywhere else in the developed world need to be questioned rather critically, I think. So we're addressing big questions. Yeah. To what extent is productivity a regional problem? What are the causes of regional disparities? Governance issues, skills, investment choices, both private sector investment choices, location decisions of firms, say, woods investment. And of course, public investment decisions, infrastructure and and so on. And looking at the causes, the diagnoses and also policy responses, both in terms of government leveling up policy, but also more more broadly, how to think about this. Okay, well, I'm going to do what what I asked other speakers to do and having given the briefest overview of the big questions, actually focusing on one angle, you know, one particular piece of work that that I've been engaged engaged in. Well, over several years in in different, different shapes and forms. And the 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 angle I want to take is, well, what, what, what's the role of, you know, sectoral composition? You know, does it matter what what places do? What what activities are going on in different places? I think to people on the ground, you know, that's of first order importance. But I also think it's probably probably fair to say it's 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 rather under research, rather little thinking about that. But indeed, it's dismissed in parts of the literature as being, you know, secondary, a point I I disagree with. Because when we think about sectoral composition, you know, why, why should that matter? Well, I mean, there are two basic reasons. One is just a pretty mechanical, direct composition effect, you know, some sectors pay more than others. And if you've got one of those sectors, you know, that's great. So there's a direct competition thing, but I think I hope to persuade you that much more importantly, there's an equilibrium effect. Some sectors can sort of raise activity in an area and make the sector boom. Others have potentially rather perverse effects leaving leaving places in not a good shape. So that's the angle I want to talk about for ten minutes or so, or whatever. Whatever I have given myself, and it's going to draw on a recent, very nearly a complete paper with Trish Rice. Okay, let me let me start with a bit of background, a bit of the broad broader picture stuff. I mean, I think, I think I can say it's pretty, pretty well known, pretty much agreed that a lot of the current problems of UK regional inequalities disparities really came out of the the deindustrialization shocks of the nineteen seventies and eighties. You know, looking back over the economic history of that period, which those people in the audience probably won't remember. You know, there really was, you know, one shock after another and sectors disappearing. Places using losing their traditional comparative advantage, very often in 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 big export sectors or at least tradable goods sectors. So there's massive shocks in the seventies and eighties in particular. And the second aspect of that is those, you know, nineteen seventies was was a long time ago. But the the effects of those shocks have been astonishingly persistent. So some some work I did, if you look at the most the most deprived local authority districts in the UK now, doing some sort of rough cutoffs for the sake of exposition, about two thirds of them were places that had massive negative shocks in the nineteen seventies. And those two thirds were sort of on average, pretty average looking places in the sixties and seventies, had had these shocks. And, you know, two generations on. Yeah, now it's still showing up in these these deprivation levels. So 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 massive persistence, something to do with sectoral change, structural change in the seventies and eighties. Okay, I also think it's pretty obvious, you know, what the adjustment mechanism should have been and then why they didn't work. I mean, in simplest terms, you know, if a place gets a negative shock, there are two adjustment mechanisms. One is people move out and the other is jobs move in. Well, we know that people moving out is 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 slow and problematic, you know, it's the young and the more able that go. We're all economists, so we know that it's the fixed factor that really takes the hit. So it's the fixed factor of the old people, the less skilled people, house prices. They're the things that take the hit when there's the 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 negative shock, mobile factors move. The other mechanism that we like to think works rather well is that jobs move in. But of course, that's actually where I think sort of fundamental market failure is here. For tradable good sectors in particular, you have a choice of where to produce. And location decisions in those sectors tend to be pretty sticky. Now, that sounds a bit of a bit of a bit of a ridiculous myself. You have a choice where to reduce because you can trade, but once you're there, you're getting lock-in effects and agglomeration and all that stuff. So it's really, you know, quite difficult to start a new Silicon Valley somewhere, you know, in the West Midlands, much as you might wish to do so. So there's that sort of adjustment failure, failure. But let me sort of go go a bit deeper into this. So what is the role of sectors, tradability? Their tradability in particular in in shaping economic performance in in places. Let me say now, when I'm using the word tradability, I mean it in a very elastic sense. You know, there's stuff that's perfectly internationally traded. There's stuff that's traded nationally, regionally, locally, or really just within a hundred yard radius. So I'm going to use it in in that very elastic way appropriately, I think. What I want to do is say a little bit about, you know, some of some evidence that I think suggests that sectoral structure and that tradability dimension in particular doesn't really matter for for earnings and for measured productivity. What you do matters, what a surprise. And then a little bit about some of the rather simple mechanisms that that create that empirical result. Okay, let me go straight to the empirical result. Suppose we can measure tradability. And I'm going to proxy it by something called sparsity bias, which I'll talk about in a moment. Well, I better talk about it right now, in fact. Sparsity bias, well, let me do it properly. Sparsity at the central level is a measure of the extent to which a sector is concentrated in few places. Not sure sparsity is really the best word for it. Think of it as the opposite of ubiquity, if you like, you know, haircuts are everywhere. Nuclear engineering is in one place. So nuclear engineering is sparse, well, a few places. Haircuts are ubiquitous. Okay, so for each sector, you can construct a measure of the sparsity, sexual concentration, sorry, the spatial concentration of the sector. And then, of course, you can aggregate that up in an employment weighted way to the sparsity bias of particular places. So some places have sectors that are that that are themselves sparse, you know, finance being a good example of one of those. As just as shipbuilding was or, you know, heavy industries were. Others have sectors that are not sparse, whereas in backroom staff, government offices, those sorts of jobs. If you construct that measure, then you do actually find a rather robust and powerful relationship, which is the scatter plot on the left there, which is area sparsity bias on the horizontal, the mean hourly earnings in the place on the vertical. The red dots, if you can see color on your screen, London ITL threes or NUTS three, as we used to call them, London, London districts. So unsurprisingly, London has an employment structure skewed towards very sparse sectors, London ITL three areas. But it's not only London, okay? That positive relationship is in the data is is remarkably astonishingly strong. So that suggests powerfully that it does matter what you do. Well, as I said at the beginning, you know, why, why, why does it matter? There are two mechanisms. One, it's the composition effect. It's obvious, right? It just happens to be the case that sectoral sparsity indices are possibly correlated with sector earnings. You know, finance is sparse and finance pays well. I just take that to be a consequence of the technologies of of trade and employment in those sectors as they currently are. Okay, so that's just a correlation out there. But the more interesting mechanism is 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 what I'm calling the equilibrium effect. So what I mean by that is, you know, suppose a place has a productivity advantage in 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 one sector. And think of that as being exogenous, so just sort of a Cardian productivity advantage for the for the sake of argument. How does that affect what's going on? How does that affect the place? Well, if you've got a product productivity advantage in a tradable sector, tradable sectors have high demand elasticities. tradable sectors have high demand elasticities. I mean, it's more open economy, right? That's my assumption, an infinite demand elasticity. So a little productivity advantage there, it's going to give you a very large quantity response. Not much of a price response, a flat demand curve. It's going to raise employment, it's going to raise the cost of living, it's going to raise nominal earnings. You know, that's a perfect labor mobility here, if you like, but the cost of living has gone up. So wages are going to be high in places that have productivity advantages in trade, highly tradable sectors. But of course, if you've got some productivity advantage in a non-tradable sector, that's almost surely got a much lower demand elasticity. So productivity advantage does not give you a quantity response. On the contrary, on the contrary. Instead of that, it gives you, gives you a price reduction. So you're getting little employment change, lower cost of living, price reduction. So possible reduction in nominal earnings in the place. Again, you know, think of that operating through, through the cost of living. So actually, a physical productivity increase in a non-tradable sector might be measured as a reduction in value productivity, right? So you're getting completely different equilibrium responses out of those two things. Okay. Two forces at work there, which is more important, which one matters? Well, a little regression there. The left-hand column is just the scatter plot that we saw a moment ago with, with and without London. So yes, sparsity bias in places are fairly significant variable in that relationship with, with hourly earnings. And it's mainly the composition, sorry, it's mainly the equilibrium effect that does it. Certainly for the UK as a whole, that's the one to take out London. It's the equilibrium effect that does it. In other words, your small productivity advantage in a tradable sector really pulls the whole place along. Pulling up earnings, raising the cost of living, the equilibrium effect, whereas non-tradable, low sparsity bias has the opposite effect. So really, all this is doing is saying, if I can move to conclusions, all it's doing is making this unsurprising observation, that what places do matters. Just getting at that mechanically through, you know, decomposition effects and the variation in sector earnings isn't going to give you the full story. It's an equilibrium response. These are obvious points, but I think they have sort of big implications. Physical productivity and value productivity, as Rebecca said, we'd better be thinking carefully about those. In, in non-tradables, an increase in physical productivity might bring about a fall in measured value productivity. Because if the demand is, you don't, you have to see as low, price is falling. To go back to the, once you start thinking in these terms, you really start thinking, well, adjustment processes and a lot of regional policies are devoted at bringing in all these non-tradable, low, low value activities into a place. So really, they're embedding the problem. They might be creating short run, short run employment, which is great. They're embedding a longer, longer term structural problem in the place. And a final concluding comment, this matters at the regional level, but let's think nationally as well. If the underlying market failure here is this sticky location decision of firms in tradable sectors. You know, they don't, Silicon Valley doesn't want to move out of Silicon Valley. So that's the underlying market failure. Then we're going to be in a world where there are multiple equilibria. You know, you lose a tradable sector and you don't get another one back automatically. Instead, you just fill up with warehouses and that sort of stuff. That's true regionally, it's true nationally. So a country, you know, two, two countries identical in fundamentals, one might have lost a lot of tradable sectors and have been doing rather poorly for that reason. Okay, let me stop there. I've obviously taken only slightly more than the time. I've flattered to other people. I will see if I can manage this challenge of ending sharing of the screen. I will invite questions from the audience. Please do feel free to type things in to the chat. Not to the chat, you can't see that. I will try and see if I can recover the moderator's screen, which I can and have. So if I can invite, you know, questions or comments from, from the audience, we've given, tried to give a flavor of what the Productivity Institute does. And if I can also invite Bart to come back, giving him penultimate couple of words on all the things that the institute is doing that we have not been able to cover in this, this hour and a quarter so far in this session. So Bart, would you like to come, come in on, on, on this?
Sure. So no questions for now. I, I'm happy to share a little bit where we're, where we're heading in terms of our research program. I mean, we are just over a year and a half on the way now. So, and you've seen from the flavor of discussions that, that and presentations today that we, we, we covering a lot here and then even are not comprehensive. So what we need to do now and what we are going to do is that this research also has given us a good feel for where, where we're heading in terms of more focus and what are the things that really are going to, in our view, make a difference to get our hands on solutions, if you like, or deeper diagnosis of where the productivity issues are. So I can share my screen and just sort of take you quickly through. And in the meantime, if people have any more questions or any of my colleague panel members want to respond to that, that'd be, be quite useful. You, you could roughly divide our focus in going forward into sort of three main areas, all of which you've heard a bit of today. So one is obviously a whole area of labor markets and skills, the link to health and wellbeing, which has come back in various presentations, obviously Mary's, but also Stephen has spoken about this extensively. So there's a lot of work that we need to do about this skills mismatch, which at the national level is whether we, whether we have overall the right education system to deliver the right skill set, but also this sort of regional and sectoral thinking about, do we have the right skills in the right sectors and in the right place? And this is partly a supply issue, but it is as much a demand issue about understanding and which, which sectors and which industries are asking these skills. Link to this is the issue of precarious employment and the flexibility of the labor markets and, and wellbeing and sort of the underlying questions of that. So that's one block of work that we believe is quite important. Obviously, it ties in with a lot of the, the work that we've seen in other sessions at this conference on labor markets. The second main area is technology creation and diffusion and innovation, but also net zero. So I already mentioned when I presented the main themes that when we think about a lot of big research topics is digital transformation and zero transition that are, are some of the key aspects. And we believe that actually the link between the two is actually a potential area of further research. Because frankly, you know, it would be a fairly safe hypothesis to say that if we just sort of go along with the drive toward net zero without thinking through how to use technologies better and how to make better use of digital technology, the productivity effects of this may actually be quite disappointing, if not detrimental to, 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 to what we're trying to solve here in terms of driving productivity. So we think this combination of looking at technology and the diffusion and absorption of those technologies in light of the climate transition and net zero is, is a critical second area of research. And then finally, the final area of research is, of course, most clearly came back also in Tony's presentation is the, the area of place in relation to institutions and policies. So where are the places for the most productive investments? What is the governance? We didn't talk much about that part of, of the work that we're doing. What is the governance and institutional structure that we make around it? And if the, the final issue that we didn't talk about is the role of finance in this respect? And whether we do have the right finance mechanisms, again, in the right place and, and focusing on the, on the right firms. So one, one issue, for example, is, is the issue of the collateralization of intangibles. When the economy becomes more intangible, you know, do we also have the right finance mechanisms around it? Some work that's also been addressed and other work, for example, by Jonathan Haskel in his, in his latest book that was just published on restarting the future. So those are sort of three main blocks where I think the Productivity Institute on the basis of the insights produced so far is seeking sort of more focus in the next few years. And Tony, that is just up there if you want to add anything or Stephen or Mary, if there's any more questions in the chat.
Yes, let me invite, if, if Mary or Stephen now want, want to come in briefly, that will be fine.
Now it seems we lost them entirely.
Okay, Stephen is checking his plugs. Let's pull their off one hat. Mary, any thoughts? Don't know if you've got any thoughts. I'm going to draw this to a closing just, just a moment or two.
Sorry, Tony, before you draw to. Hi, sorry, Tony, before you draw to a close, there's a question if you want to.
It's not in moderator view, there isn't. Sorry.
Okay, so there's, there's one in the chat. So I think it's a general question if. So Keshav has asked, what is the best way to construct a sparsity index for the UK regions? That's just the only question there.
Okay, okay. Thank you. So thank you for reading that out. I really can't see it anywhere. Yeah. So what we want to measure is tradability. We're measuring it by, by what I call sparsity. So that's a matter of looking at the distribution of employment in a sector across regions. Then you can ask, well, what aspect of that distribution are you going to measure? What we actually measure is the skewness of the location quotient. That's a little bit odd, but if you think about what we want to get at is the tradability. And tradability mapped through a demand function, an isostatic demand function, where you have an elasticity creates, you know, if the elasticity is less than one, it's going to be concave, the concave transformation. If it's greater than one, it's a convex transformation, really stretching stuff out into the right tail. So, yeah, for, for each industry, for each of 600 odd, nice sectors, so it's, it's, it's fine. Get this distribution of location quotients across places, get, get, look at the distribution. Take a statistic from the distribution and we use skewness, right? So that gives you the sector sparsity indices. And then the place sparsity bias is the employment weighted average of those sector sparsity indices, sector by sector. Variance rather than skewness does a pretty good job because obviously you're, you're, you're portraying all things. You're, you're, you're stretching out the, the, the distribution. But skewness actually is something theoretically correct and does better, which is quite pleasing. I hope that answered the, the question. Thank you for it. Okay, I think we've lost Steve altogether. I know we haven't. He's waiting to be admitted, which is apparently in my power, remarkable. Well, welcome back, Steve.
Yeah, sorry, Tony, about that.
I was on the verge of, we, we've had a short discussion about sparsity indices, but you were going to come in on, on something.
Yes, only about the, the, the sort of TPI data lab really. And just, just to say that, you know, sitting alongside the, the methods theme that Rebecca and colleagues are working on. You know, there is this aspiration to develop, you know, some, some sort of, some sort of bit, some sort of USP in terms of specific data assets. And I think that, that is important for us in terms of linking together a number of the different research themes and potentially advancing some of the agendas that Bart was talking about before. So that, I think, is one of the most alongside the kind of research projects that Bart, research directions that Bart was talking about. That will be one of the kind of big themes of the next, your sort of year or 18 months in terms of what we're trying to do.
Exactly. That's, thanks for bringing that up, Stephen. And indeed, if, if people have produced research and data sets that, you know, that like other people to use or that like other people to access, it's actually sort of a one-stop shop for productivity related data. We're not trying to reinvent the wheel here, but basically try to provide a function for people coming to the Productivity Institute's website to basically drive them to a place where they can access these data sets. So please feel free to reach out. And obviously, once you start populating it, feel free also to, you're welcome to visit it and hopefully make good use of it.
Okay, I'm just going to have myself and then wrap, wrap up. The, the website for the Productivity Institute is www.productivity.ac.uk. So I would invite people to, to visit that. There are discussion papers up there, policy insight papers, and of course, an overview of all, of all the activities. So, so please do look at productivity.pc.uk. Thanks to the panelists. Thanks for those attending. And of course, thanks for the SLC for supporting the entire project and the Royal Economic Society for putting on this event. So thank you all and we'll finish at this point.
Thanks, Tony. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, all. Bye.